Hello, everybody.
Charger.
Welcome to the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. I see a past board member just came in. Hi, Jane. Welcome to the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education meeting. I see we have a full house tonight. Please join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mathias, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. LaGrand.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Phelps.
Present.
Dr. Flores.
Here.
President Baker.
We're all set. We have an agenda before us. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Support. Been moved and supported. And if we have an agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same time, we have an agenda. Excuse me, let's start with celebrations. We have our Kiwanis Dictionary Donation. You're going to present.
Vice President Slade, Mrs. Evans, and Board of Ed Members. I am thrilled to be here tonight because not only do I get to have a celebration, but I get to clarify some misconceptions that might exist. Now, you all know that many people think this is the ultimate handheld device, right?
Yes.
Everybody has them here. But in reality, the ultimate handheld advice - device is actually a dictionary. And I know there are a couple of board members that have theirs this year. The rest of you, I'm told, have theirs already. But this is a project of the Kiwanis Club. And I'm going to introduce some friends to come up here today with me. I'm going to ask Carl Anderson from - and he is president of the Grand Rapids Golden K Kiwanis Club, Patrick Newcomb, Amber Hudson, and Peter Satterweight to come and join me, if you would. And they're going to talk about this wonderful project with our third graders in Grand Rapids.
Very good.
Well, thank you for allowing us to be a part of your meeting tonight. This is kind of a new - even though the project has been around for quite a while, it's relatively new for me. I started this morning and with some handouts. And that's the extent of my knowledge about the whole program. But anyway, the Golden K Kiwanis Club of Grand Rapids is very happy and proud to be part of furnishing dictionaries to third graders in the greater city of Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Why don't you go ahead?
Hello, my name's Amber Hudson. I'm the president of Grand Valley State Circle K International. And we helped make the nameplates that go inside of the dictionary. We just want to thank you all for letting us do that. It's an honor to help. And I just want to thank some people that are here with me tonight that helped participate in that dictionary project. Jordan Phelps, Lauren McCain, and Marcel Jeremiah. Can you all stand up, please?
Thanks so much. I don't have much to add, other than as president of the Grand Rapids North Kiwanis, we are just as pleased as we were last year and for many years in the past to participate and put these wonderful handheld devices in the hands of third graders all over the city.
And just so you know, if there's any indication of their value, I can't even keep this. They won't even let me keep this one. I have to pass it back. So if you would be so kind, thank you very much.
They're priceless.
They are.
They are priceless. And I'll ask all the board members, too. And here comes - and here comes the man who's going to take them all back from us. He appears every year just to collect these.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. Okay. Next, we have the Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest.
Great, Dr. Gunno.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mrs. Evans, Vice President Slade, and Board Members. This evening, I'd like to call Mrs. Fernandez, principal of Southwest Community Campus, up. And we have the great pleasure of presenting to you the winners of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Sixth Grade - Sixth Grade Essay Contest this evening.
Yes, I would like - it is my pleasure to introduce you to Rodney Martin from the law offices of Warner, Norcross, and Judd, who has been sponsoring this contest for the Grand Rapids Public Schools students for over 10 years now.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking time to recognize these students this evening. This - as Carmen said, this is the 10th Annual Essay Contest. And it's been our pleasure, Warner Norcross, to be involved in that time. We're especially thankful to Ms. Fernandez for the work that she has done to help us coordinate this contest. You can imagine, it's not an easy task to do, and we couldn't do it without her. We're happy to announce this year that we had another record number of entries. We had 327 essays submitted this year from 10 different schools in the Grand Rapids Public School system. And not only did we have a record number of entries, but I would tell you, as I've told you before, the quality has gone up. We see it going up each year. And I think that's a testament to the teachers and to the administrators and what they're doing in the schools. It's a testament to the family members who are supporting these students. And of course, to the students themselves who are dedicating themselves to do their best. And we're really happy to recognize them this evening. Yes. Each of the essays was read - well, we had over 50 attorneys and staff members from our offices around the state read the essays and judged them. They were judged in two phases. Ultimately, the second tier of essays came up. And from those, we have 22 students who will recognize tonight with honorable mention. And then we have a second runner-up, a first runner-up, and a grand prize winner. Each of the students who received an honorable mention will receive a certificate and a gift certificate to Schuler Books. We'll have those - all these prizes will be awarded at the end of the month. We didn't get them all done for today. I apologize. And then the three winners will each receive, in addition to gift certificate to Schuler Books, they'll each receive a certificate of deposit, which we hope will be a start toward their college fund. So with that said, I'd like to invite the second runner-up, Damaris Jackson from Riverside Middle School, to come up. And have Damaris read his essay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My hero, my friend. My definition of a hero is someone who helps people. Dr. King fits the definition because he did help people trying to stop segregation. My friend Brent is also a hero, but in a different way. He helps me with homework and helps me with many other things. We are different races, but I think Dr. King would like that. Wasn't that the whole point from the very beginning? I've known Brent since first grade. He stepped into my life when I was six. I was riding down a hilly street and found out I didn't know how to use my brakes very well. As I cleared my head, I crashed and - as I cleared my head after crashing into a tree, I looked up and saw a kid standing there. He came up to me and said, "Hey, you okay?" I told him I thought so and that my wheel was messed up. Then I said, "Can you teach me how to ride a bike?" He said he could. He told me - he told me his name was Brent, and he helped me get up. The first two times he helped me, I hit a couple things. But the third time, I learned how to ride a bike. That is how we became friends and still are to this day. I was - I was fun to having - it was fun to have a new friend. I am glad that my new best friend, I mean, hold on. I am glad that he is my new - my best friend, and we continue to help each other out. Heroes don't need to wear special outfits. They just need to be there when we crash. Dr. King saved lots of people from being treated wrong with his words he used in his speeches. He said, "I have a dream," which was helpful because it brought lots of people together. Even though we came from different backgrounds and look different, Brent and I get along. Dr. King would like him - like him being my friend because he taught - he taught me what the true meaning of a hero is. Sometimes hero can be spelled F-R-I-E-N-D.
Is your friend here by any chance? Is Brent here this evening? No.
The first runner-up this year was Tanaya Floyd, also from Riverside Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What can you do to accomplish a dream? We all have a dream, no matter where we live or who we are. Everybody dreams. Some people have selfish dreams, like to win millions of dollars in the lottery or to become a princess or a prince. But my dream isn't like that. It is selfless, like Martin Luther King Jr.'s. In his "I Have a Dream" speech, I read some sentiments that are like mine. For example, Dr. King said, "Now is the time to rise from the dark and desolate valley of segregation and the sun-limbed path of racial justice." Like Dr. King, I dream of ending unfair things, too, like teasing, bullying, discrimination, beheadings, and hangings. Maybe to accomplish Dr. King and my dreams, we will need to pull some hero - some more heroes out of our world. To me, a hero is a person who wants to help just to be nice or that cares for no reason. A hero doesn't have to have the abilities to fly or have super strength to save the day. They just need to follow their hearts and have sophistication in them. The people I think that are heroes to me are the women and men who work at the Kids' Food Basket. They are my role models because they help the kids that don't get to go home and have any - have a snack or eat large meals that other people get to eat. The men and women working there are my role models because they're - they give their own time and lots of money to help kids who can't even have a small snack after school. I think it is very sweet that they would do something wonderful like this. The people that are working at Kids' Food Basket help me want to become a better person by showing me that I can help and hunger and help people who need assistance. My mother has even volunteered at the Kids' Food Basket. In my opinion, when I heard that there are kids in this world that don't have any food to drink, I mean, any food to eat or dirty water, I thought, "Hey, why are we getting involved?" I plan to go down there to their offices and ask, "How old do you have to be to work there?" If I don't get to - if I get to help them, then I will take my time to make food bags for people. We need to figure out ways to help all people live their lives. Our Constitution says that everyone has the right to go after their own happiness. We all should make that happen. I think the men and women at Kids' Food Basket have the same characteristics as Dr. King did. Like the care and love they put into their actions, I want to have the same ones, too. If Dr. King was still alive, he would be proud of the great accomplishments that organizations like Kids' Food Basket have done for these kids to help meet their needs. I plan to try to make the world a better place by going to school and going to college at Michigan State University. My dream was also to become a doctor or some kind of nurse to help people. I really hope my dream comes true. I really hope that more and more people can help the kids and adults who need it when they can. Like Dr. King said, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, keep moving forward." So that - so do that and don't give up. Don't be the selfish dreamers. Instead, work to feed the hungry. I'm going to try to make that my motto. When I work to accomplish a dream, I will do it in honor of Dr. King, not just for me. I will try my best to make a success in this world like Dr. King wanted us to. What can you do to accomplish a dream?
Very impressive.
Our grand prize winner this year, I should say, Damaris and Tanaya are both in Ms. Holt's class at Riverside Middle School. Our grand prize winner this year is in Ms. Reed's class at the Center for Economicology. It is Bodie Bickford. And Bodie, if you could come forward.
My superheroes. Heroes and role models use their gifts to help make the world a better place. They put the needs in front of their own needs and look for ways to help others. Heroes are courageous and brave. They do not run away from danger, but instead, they run towards it if they think someone is in need. Heroes are kind and nice, and they never make people feel bad about needing help. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is a great example of someone who is both a hero and a role model. He used his gifts to make the world a more fair and just place - place for all people. And he was brave because he knew that not everyone agreed with his ideas and that he could die. My parents are not as famous as Dr. King, but they are heroes and role models for my brothers and me. There are many different kinds of heroes in this world. Some heroes risk their lives to help others, like soldiers, firefighters, and policemen. They have to run into burning buildings or chase after terrorists and criminals with weapons to make the world a safer place. Others are heroes because they provide things to others that make the world a better place, even if they can make more money doing something else. Teachers, scientists, and doctors are this kind of hero. Other people can be heroes in the moment. These are people who see something bad happening, and they make a quick decision to do what they can to help. An example of this would be if someone saw a person getting their purse stolen, and they decided to chase after them to catch them or get the purse back, just because it is the right thing to do. Another example of this is if someone is getting bullied at school and instead of ignoring it, the person tries to stop it or goes and gets a teacher. My mom and dad are a different kind of hero. They're what I call everyday heroes. They do not look like superheroes, and they do not fight crime. My parents do not do what they can each day to help lives of those around them be better. They do this for me, my brothers, but they also do this for my friends, our neighbors, and people they don't even know. My parents are selfless. They spend all of their time coaching and running my brothers and me to practices and games. They help out at school with baking, field trips, and meetings. They teach Sunday School, do laundry, and mow the lawn. They help me focus on my homework, and they check my math and reading. My parents always encourage me to do my best, and they never give up on me, even when I let myself down by not trying my hardest. If I let goals score in soccer that they know I could stop, they just talk through what I can do better, and then they help me focus on the next chance I have to do to do my best. They do this with school, too. My parents never walk away from someone who is in need. At school, when my mom helps out on a field trip, she will give away her own lunch if someone forgets theirs, even though she is a vegetarian. On a field trip to Rockford Dam, my mom was - I mean, on a field trip to Rockford Dam with C.A. Frost last year, my mom took off her own long underwear and socks and gave them to a kid whose waders leaked, even - leaked so they would not be cold, even though my mom is always cold. My dad always volunteers to coach or keep the book in baseball, even though he would probably rather relax and watch the game. If someone on the team is sad about striking out or dropping a fly ball, my dad will scoot over by them and cheer them up. Being an everyday hero may not seem like much to you, but it makes a big impact on me, and I think on other people, too. My parents make me want to be the very best person that I can be. When I get frustrated about my club feet and feel sorry for myself, I reflect back on how important it is to give my very best without excuses. And I just get up and try my hardest. I know that my parents won't be upset if I don't win, as long as I tried my hardest. When I get mad at my parents for making me do so much extra work, I reflect on how my parents never do anything so-so. This goes for everything from homemade brownies to cleaning the garage. It makes me want to give my best effort, too. When I am scared about failing at something like a test or a game, I think about how courageous my parents are in facing whatever challenges come their way. I know if I give my best, they will be proud of me. That means I did not fail. When I get nervous about having more casts and surgeries on my feet, I think about how brave my parents are, and I remember how much they love me and how they work so hard to get me the best care in the world. And then I just know I can face it. When I watch my parents work so hard every day to be the best people they can be, I know it is how I want to be. I see the impact they have on me, my brothers, and everyone around them. And I know I want to use my life to have an impact like that. I want to be brave enough to be the best son, brother, friend, soccer player, student, basketball player, neighbor, baseball player, athlete, and one day, husband, father, and employee that I can be. I want to be just like my parents, my everyday heroes.
You can see why it's such a pleasure to be involved in this contest. I'd like to now to recognize the students who are receiving honorable mentions. I will call out their names, and if they would stand up one at a time, I would appreciate it. Isaiah Brown Myers from Aberdeen Elementary. Vicentez Martinez Jr. from Alger Middle School. Dori Shat Beemers from the Center for Economicology. Priyanka Malakar from the Center for Economicology. Rachel Malakar from the Center for Economicology. Mackiley Simpson from the Center for Economicology. Ava Baldis from the Grand Rapids Montessori. And then all of these next students all come from Riverside Middle School. So we have Jessella Calderon Gomez. Lashonda Cole. Tayshon Conley. Amari Hodges. Arianna Hopkins. Tyrone James. Lakeisha Jenkins. Greenlee Johnson. Marlene Martinez. Reginald Nash. Aneas Pearson. Jasmine Reese. Nartis Richardson. Jacoys Saunders. And Rebecca Wright. Thank you very much.
I wonder if we could have all of you come up and shake hands with the board members? We are so pleased and grateful and thankful at what great work you did. So if you could just come up and shake our hands, we'd really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
They'll figure it out this way. Congratulations.
Good job, I like that.
Where are you? Congratulations.
Have you wait there?
Good job. Second wave. Congratulations. Good job. All right, good honors. Yeah, I enjoyed that.
Thank you so very much, all of you. Wonderful work.
So the parents are proud?
Very nice. There goes our crowd.
There goes your half an hour.
Well, it'll be all right. It'll be all right. There's another few minutes. Well, there goes our audience. I think I also, on behalf of the board... I think I'll wait. The staff. Each of the staff. Now that we have very few of us left, I want to congratulate the students, but also their parents and teachers. A little quieter. Could we have - we have any student comments today, our student representatives?
Okay, so, no, all the students left, but I just wanted to say that those essays were really good. And I can just only imagine the student involvement, I mean, the teacher involvement and parent involvement. But I always like to say that yesterday was a very important day with us selling Martin Luther King Day and having a day off school. It was a great opportunity. We also had the chance to go see Selma, a movie tribute to Martin Luther King. And for middle schoolers and high schoolers, I'm not sure how many people went out and saw it, but I've heard it was a really good movie. I didn't get the chance to, however, but that's pretty much it.
So I just wanted to mention two things. The first is that at City High School today, my class held a discussion regarding the uniform policy. And I believe that one person's here for public comment. Just wanted to say thank you to them for coming out to discuss it. And Givante and I would love if we could have any opportunity to discuss it with the board. That'd be fantastic, even though I do understand you're all very busy. The second thing is, I just wanted to express my school's gratitude for what's in this purchasing agenda tonight. The payment for our IB tests is extremely important to us. I know that these tests cost, I'm not exaggerating, hundreds of dollars often. And without this being subsidized by the district, there's no way that many students could take these tests. And this year, City's on track to get the most IB diplomas we've ever gotten in our history. So this money is not going to waste, and we really appreciate it, just, you know, not just as a student representative, but as a City High School student, I wanted to say thank you for that.
Very nice. Very nice. Now, time for public comment. Do we have any - anyone who's going to speak?
We have one, but it's for non-agenda, I believe.
All right. We have reports, secretary report. Mr. Mathias.
There's just a couple. One is the KIASB Dinner.
One is the KI ASB Dinner Meeting. The Kent Intermediate Association of School Board invites the board members and administrators to join them at the Downtown Market to attend the what every board member should, needs to know about the Common Core. Preaching guest speaker, Dr. William Schmidt. Uh, the event will take place on Thursday, February 12th from beginning at 6:00 P.M. Please contact Julie Anderson in the superintendent's office to RSVP. And then the second announcement would be that, uh, new, uh, New School Board Members Institute and Certified Board Member Award classes, the Michigan Association of School Boards is providing a two-day training conference to prepare board members in their quest to become a more effective school board. Uh, so, anyone that's interested, uh, February 13th and 14th at the Henry Center in Lansing. So, if you'd like to attend, please, uh, contact Julie Anderson at the superintendent's office. That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, uh, I'd like to ask, uh, Dan Helmuth to come forward with a special recognition. Hello?
Good evening, sir. Madam President, Mrs. Evans, members of the board, uh, it's an honor for me to be here tonight. It is a special month and certainly school board members do not get enough thanks and praise and appreciation for the work that you do. And, uh, it just happens to be that January is our school board recognition month. And I know that Superintendent Weatherall Neal, uh, has prepared a resolution for you all. And I'm going to read the language that's, that's included in the resolution. Whereas the Governor of the State of Michigan has declared the observance of January 2015 as School Board Member Recognition Month. And whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision makers who consistently respond to the needs of their community. And whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board members represent the voice of this community in serving the interests of our schoolchildren and preparing them for the future. And whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board members continually strive for improvement and progress in education with an understanding of the need for commitment to change and growth. And whereas the men and women elected by the people as members of the Grand Rapids Public School Board deserve recognition for countless hours of public service to public education in this community. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Teresa Weatherall Neal, Superintendent of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby declare January 2015 as School Board Member Recognition Month in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I commend the members of the Grand Rapids School Board for their dedicated service to the children of this community and urge all citizens to join me in demonstrating gratitude to these outstanding individuals. Be it further resolved that the state, that the student representatives to the board also be recognized for their dedication and service to the board in providing input on a wide variety of student issues in the district. Be it further resolved that this resolution be printed in the proceedings of the board and a copy be placed on file. Thank you.
Now we need a bigger crowd.
I don't know if this is on there, but I'm also gonna, while I have it, the opportunity, just another plug for the We Are GR School Choice Expo. Uh, we have our second School Choice Expo. We had one back in November, but our next School Choice Expo is, uh, next week, January 29th, 4:00 to 7:00 P.M. at City High Middle School. Information is on our website at GRPS.org. Uh, as we, with our theme schools and centers of innovation, uh, we, uh, require applications. That deadline is fast approaching, it's February 27th, so act now, apply today.
Very good, thank you. We have a purchasing agenda item. Can I have any support for the?
Motion for approval?
Support. Support.
Support. Any discussion? No discussion? If they're hearing none, we'll have, uh, need a motion, don't I? Motion to approve. Sorry, we need the vote.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
President Baker.
Very good. We have a purchasing. And we have now consent agenda, I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Discussion items, time to finalize committees, are there, is there any discussion on that? I think everyone knows where their assignments are. Is there anybody who does not? No discussion? Then I think it's finalized.
Yes, Vice President, uh, Slade, and, uh, members of the board. Uh, we are pleased to acknowledge that today marks another milestone in the development of our Grand Rapids Public Museum School with the hiring of Dr. Hanks. Uh, Dr. Hanks is in our audience and I'm going to ask that he would please stand so we can acknowledge his presence here.
Very nice. Congratulations, it should be a wonderful adventure. We're looking forward to it. Public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Do we have anyone, is there a card?
There is one.
There is one?
Uh, Megan Geetson.
We know that name. Because we know your mom. Yeah, welcome.
Thank you, uh, good eve- good evening. I am Megan Geetson, a student at City High Middle School. To start off, I do not agree or want uniforms, although I have come to terms with the fact that we will have uniforms one way or another. I believe that the best option would be, be a compromise. So, one of the compromises we had thought of was an alternative uniform for all GRPS middle and high school students. The uniform would consist of pants or skirt skirts of any fabric and a full tee shirt that covers, um, shoulders and midriff. And it, uh, does not have any offensive or explicit content. The idea sprouts from the fact that students most likely already own at least one pair of pants and a tee shirt, so they would not be required to purchase, um, much else for the school year. Tee shirts are easy and cheap to acquire at any tee, at any store all year round. This option would appeal to the majority of students as they would be able to wear what feels comfortable, comfortable to themselves. The second idea we thought of was to, was to only allow solid or patterned shirts and jeans, um, pants or skirts as a uniform. This would cut out a lot of the inappropriate clothing choices that students make these days. It would also make the students look more uniform without making them feel as if they are being made to wear a uniform. It would do what the points on the GRPS website are asking for in terms of uniforms. Taking away the use of logos would take away any of, it would take away a lot of the distractions that are caused by dress. The third idea we had was just to continue with the current plan for uniforms, but have exception days. For example, every Friday and on holidays, the uniform policy would no longer be in effect. If a student were to wear spirit wear, they would be exempt from the uniform policy as well on any given day. This would do three major things. It would raise money for the school due to, um, spirit wear purchases, improve school pride, and it would still allow students to look uniform as well. To end out, I would like to thank you for listening to this speech and taking the consideration of the students and would appreciate it if before the meeting is adjourned, you take just a few minutes during board comment to give a little feedback as to how any of you like the ideas I have presented, so I can improve the plan for the future. I also brought with me a more detailed plan of all the options. I only brought five copies, but I will still email all of you an electronic copy.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? We will take your idea under advisement. Do you have any comments?
I do not.
Board member comments. Mr. Ross.
Um, no comment, welcome aboard though, obviously. Um, other than that, I really don't have any other comment, just excited about, uh, new folks on board and taking things into consideration that Ms. Geetson just laid out. Well spoken, I might add, your mom taught you well. Thank you. Um, other than that, no, no comment.
Oh, I just want to thank Warner, Norcross, and Judd again for sponsoring the MLK Essay Contest. It was fantastic to see all these students here and I want to thank their teachers for guiding them. Uh, every year that, um, that day becomes, uh, more and more valued by me and more and more important. It was my privilege, this morning, um, Pastor Moody drew, drew my attention to this event and it was my privilege to hear Sabrina Fulton, mother of Trayvon Martin. And, uh, it was a very, the grief of a mother is a powerful moral directive. And, um, it has challenged me and, and given me new, uh, renewed energy for the work here and elsewhere, so.
Yeah, just, um, really exciting to see the, the students, um, and their activity. And, and I think more than ever before, especially with Martin Luther King, I really had a chance to, to kind of reflect on my own upbringing. But also with current events and really realizing how critical we are to each other and how we affect, uh, each other in our, in our nation. It, it, it definitely causes a ripple effect that, that reaches all of us. And so, uh, to that end, we, we need to continue to work, uh, very, very diligently in regards to social justice and, and a lot of the issues that we face. Thank you.
Dr. Randles.
Uh, I did get a chance to see Selma this, uh, weekend with my family and it was so incredibly powerful. Uh, and then my son went again on Monday and he was able to pick out, uh, you know, then you weren't trying to really get the whole moving. And he said it was just such a trip down history to see these younger, you know, Jesse Jackson and different people that he wasn't sort of thinking he was seeing and, uh, but it was, um, uh, the very, uh, very profound. And I think everyone should, uh, see it. And, um, I guess we'll give Ms. Geetson more feedback as, as we move along here. Technically, board, we don't usually respond to, uh, comments.
As they well know.
It was very enlightening for me today to hear the children read their essays and to talk about their heroes. And, uh, it is interesting to have a hero, not necessarily someone who's on television, but to have someone writing your own backyard in your own home. Uh, so I was very intrigued by that and I want to say kudos to those teachers for pushing those children to write those essays. And for those children to open up and, uh, share with us who their heroes really are in reference to Dr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Legrand.
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
Well, it was a very enlightening, uh, meeting, certainly, uh, rousing in spirit. Um, I, um, being new, obviously, looking at the packet today and I, you know, just got that today because I was getting a little training in the, um, in the tech piece to access files. Um, uh, didn't really get a chance to, uh, um, really comment, uh, in our, in our session here about, uh, the, um, committee of the whole meeting that we had and, and, uh, a comment that I had made that I didn't, uh, see written. And that was that, uh, we should have a process, uh, for new board members and board training and wanted to underscore that need for future purposes. And then secondly, uh, if I could make a suggestion that, uh, um, first of all, welcome, uh, Mr. Hanks, the, or was it Dr. Hanks? Uh, Dr. Hanks, uh, principal of, of Grand Rapids Public Museum School. And in communications that we receive, it would, would be helpful to, to have, um, a little bit of information about our leadership, uh, personnel. I think that's so important, so it, it sends a clear message that we're, we're definitely recruiting, uh, the most qualified and, uh, and experienced people in our district. And I think that's a message that we need to send forth in a transparent manner. Thank you.
I have no comment, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.